Good evening. I'd like to call over to the Calistoga Planning Commission's regular meeting, December 12th, 2018. Roll call, please.
It's noted for the record that Commissioner Scott Cooper is absent. He's been delayed coming from Napa and may or may not be joining us, so he would like for you all to proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you all please stand for pledge allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and Peter Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to C, public comments. Public comments is an opportunity to address the Planning Commission of items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The Commission cannot consider any issue or take action on items raised during public comment. Does anyone out there have a public comment they'd like to make? If not, we'll continue on to D on the agenda, adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented tonight?
So moved.
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. E, communications correspondence, staff.
I just distributed a letter to you that was given to us after distribution of the packet, and it's regarding the public hearing item for this evening.
Thank you. Okay, F, consent calendar. Approval of the minutes from November 14th, 2018, and November 28th, 2018. Do we have any conversation, deletions, corrections, or anything? If not, motion approved?
Second.
On the favor?
Yeah.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to, quickly to public hearings. G, Lincoln Avenue Apartments, Anton, Calistoga, design review DR 2018-7 and use permit UP 2018-9, consideration of a design review application and use permit for a 78-unit apartment building and site improvements on Lincoln Avenue APs number 011-050-044. I have had a conversation with staff, and I thought it would be in the best interest of the public that we will have the applicant make a, I do believe you have a presentation, PowerPoint presentation, that we would go through with that, and then we can ask any questions from the Commission, and then we'll open the public hearing, that we have, everybody has a full understanding of the project, okay?
And I'll follow up after that with my own report, and I'd just like to remind the Commission to just limit any comments to questions of the applicant at this point, and not get into discussion about the project itself.
Right.
We'll do that after the public hearing.
Okay. If the applicant would like to come on up and proceed, that would be great.
Thanks, thanks to the Planning Commission and the community of Calistoga for allowing us to come in and talk about our project tonight. My name is Scott Mateo. I'm a principal at SLJ Equity and a real estate developer based in San Francisco. However, I spend a good chunk of my time up here in Calistoga. My partners are here tonight with me, Robert Lawler from AMRAV and Vanessa Garza and Rachel Green from Anton. We've also hired our design team, the Architecture Design Collaborative, or ADC, as well as our civil engineering firm, BKF. They're also here tonight in case anybody has any questions. I've lived and owned property here in Calistoga for about 13 years. I employ a number of people in the community, and the biggest complaint in this area has consistently been the lack of housing. When this land on Lincoln Avenue became available, I thought it was a great location to build a multifamily project to bring badly needed housing to the area for three primary reasons. One is the walkability to the downtown area and to help alleviate congestion and traffic. Two, the proximity to employers, principally a lot of those hotels, hotels, restaurants, and retail in downtown area. And then three, the project we feel is consistent with the adjacent properties versus being in a higher density residential neighborhood. After entering into contract on the land, my first priority was really to find a best-in-class development and construction partner. Through several relationships and a lot of due diligence, we reached out to Anton to partner with us on this project. I had four criteria in mind for a development partner. The first was someone with a deep experience, actually, there we go, deep experience as a multifamily builder. Two, had local experience in Napa, and Anton has done a 134-unit project located just outside of the city of Napa, and thus has familiarity with the area and the history and culture here. Three, is an efficient organization with a very low cost structure and the ability to execute on time. As everybody knows, the fires have put a lot of pressure on building, the cost to build, and obviously to make this project pencil, that needs to be done on time, on budget, and it was some organization that can efficiently build and has a lot of experience in building multifamily. And then lastly, somebody to own and to property manage the asset. So Anton has a history of not only building, but they, after they finish building, they end up owning and property managing the asset. So that was important, at least to me, as everyone can probably imagine, when you build an asset and you know you're going to be holding it in the long run, you have a tendency, the quality tends to be higher, the costs tend to be on time, and it tends to just be more efficiently run, than somebody who comes in, builds it, and then hands it over to somebody else. So with that, if there's no additional questions, I want to turn it over to Anton, to Vanessa Garza, to talk a little bit about the project in more detail.
I'm Vanessa Garza. I'm with Anton DeFco. I want to thank you for having us here tonight, and as Scott said, I'm going to share some additional details about the project. So as you can see here, this is an area map, and just for anybody who's not familiar with where our site is located, we're in the blue outline there, and we're right on Lincoln Avenue, just south of where Lincoln Avenue intersects the Silverado Trail, and we're just south of the Calistoga Motor Lodge, and we're about half a mile north of downtown Calistoga, which, as Scott said, we think is great for walkability and bikability. So here is our site plan, just to give you an idea of how our site lays out. So you can see Lincoln Avenue there on the left. We have our two residential buildings fronting Lincoln, and then coming in toward the center of the property, we have our community building, and I'll get into some of those details on one of the next slides. And then beyond the community building, we have another residential building. The project in total will be 78 units, and that will include 12 below-market rate units, and we'll have a variety of floor plans and apartment sizes, so that will include studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three bedrooms, which we think provides a very nice variety of options for future residents. So here's a rendering of our project. This is the view that you would see if you were on Lincoln Avenue, and you can see that we're going for a modern farmhouse architectural style, which we think fits in nicely and complements the existing architecture in the area. And here we have our color and materials board. It's also back here if anybody wants to come up and take a closer look, but just to give you an idea of some of the details that comprise that modern farmhouse style. So on the top row there, we have our color palette, which we're using some of the creamy whites accented by gray and black tones. And then in the middle row, you can see some of our materials there, so we're using warden baton siding along with stucco. We have two different roof types, including an asphalt shingle roof as well as a standing seam metal roof. And then to the right of that, you can see our goose neck barn type lamp, which we're going to be using throughout the exterior of the property. And our goal in using some of these different materials is really to create a visually interesting building. So here is a look at some of the interior apartment features. So the image on the top left is a conceptual image of some of the finishes that we would be using within the apartment units. So that includes quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances, plank flooring in the main living areas, and carpet in the bedrooms. And then in addition to the finishes, some of the features that would be included within the units are walk-in closets within many of the bedrooms, which we think is a really nice feature. All of the units would have either a patio or a balcony, and then we also have, oh, and I also want to mention, in-unit laundry within all of the apartment units as well. And then we have some green features that I want to touch on, so all of our appliances would be Energy Star certified. We would also have low-flow plumbing fixtures and LED lighting throughout, and then we'll have a drought-tolerant landscape plant palette, which I'll get into a little bit more later. So on this slide here, I want to touch on kind of the community areas, and I think this is a really important part of the property. So this, all of these areas, we have both indoor and outdoor community areas, and this is where residents can really come together, get to know each other, spend time with their families, their friends, or even by themselves, and really have a nice place to get outside of their apartment but still on the property. So as you can see, the center area is our indoor, this is our community building, and then on either side, you have some outdoor community areas as well. So I'll just quickly walk you through to give you an idea what's included there. So as you come in through the lobby, on the left-hand side, you have our onsite leasing and management offices, which will be staffed with our employees. And to the right of that, let's see if I can show you, is it the top? It's not working. But as you come in through the entry lobby, to the right, you can see the mailroom, and this is a nice feature that our residents in some of our other properties really like. So not only do you have a mailbox, but you also have a package locker system, so if you get a package delivered to you, rather than it just staying at your front door, it can actually go into this secure storage system until you're ready to come pick it up. In addition, in the community building, we also have a community room, which we think of just kind of as a great room or a large living room, where you can rent out this space for a birthday party or, you know, gather around with your friends and watch a football game. This community room has a really nice feature, which is nano doors, so those are going to fold all the way open and create this really nice indoor-outdoor feel and really take advantage of the climate here in Calistoga. So as you move out into the loggia, which is basically an indoor-outdoor space, it's an extension of the building that has a covered roof but really no walls on either side, and so that further just enhances the indoor-outdoor feel, and we have seen that that's popular in Calistoga and some of the homes here, and so we wanted to replicate that here. And then beyond that, the triangular area to the left there, that is just an outdoor area where we have a fire pit and some game tables. And then on the right-hand side of the building, so to the right of kind of the entry lobby in the middle there, we have our gym, and that overlooks the pool area. And then we have a couple of other amenities within this building as well. So we have bike storage, which we've learned Calistogans are really into biking these days, so we wanted to make sure we provided ample bike storage. And so this is secure bike storage that we have both within the community building as well as within the residential buildings, all on the ground floor, so that it's very easy to access. And then lastly, on this slide, we are, all of our communities are very pet-friendly, and so we have some amenities for our furry friends in addition to our residents. So there's a pet spa shown here, and it's not so much a spa, it's really just a room where you can come wash your dog and blow-dry them without getting your apartment wet and dirty. And then we also have a dog run on the other end of the property, which is a nice sizable fenced-in area, so your dog can run around and get some exercise. So this next slide here, this is just really a visual representation of everything that I just described. So this just kind of provides you with some images of what we were talking about. So the first image on the top left, that's kind of a vision for the great room, just a big, bright, open airy space. Below that is the nano doors that I was mentioning, and then to the right of that, that kind of gives you an idea of what this loggia is. So you have a roof over you, but it's really open to the outdoors, and then you can see some images for our fire pit and outdoor dining and cornhole games as well. And here we have a really nice rendering that our architect put together for us. So this is the community building, and we have a lot of the same materials for the modern farmhouse style. And then on the right-hand side, that's where that loggia, that indoor-outdoor space is, just to give you another idea of what that looks like. And then finally here, we have our conceptual landscape design, and so we had two goals with our design here. One is we really wanted to create something that's drought tolerant, so something that will do really well in the local climate here with low water usage, and so all of the plant materials that we're using or proposing to use would be low water usage. And then in addition to that, we wanted to choose something that really complements the architectural style and the color scheme of the buildings. So our building is those creamy whites with the gray and black accents, and so we wanted to use the landscape as an opportunity to really provide some bright color and some richness within the property. And so here you can see, we want to bring in some of these bright pinks and purples through the use of lavender, violet trumpet vine, pink India hawthorn trees, and then to complement that, we want to use some of the bright light greens and yellows. And so two of my favorites, one is on the bottom left there, that's blonde ambition, and then the bottom center, the kind of the green grasses, that's a Mexican feather grass, and both of those just kind of blow in the wind and the breeze in a really beautiful kind of tranquil way. And so we're really excited to use the landscape design as a way to enhance the rest of property. So that is pretty much it for the presentation. I'll just conclude by saying, our team has really tried to put together something that we feel meets the needs of the community here locally by providing housing, below-market rate housing, something that's really beautiful in design, and we hope that you guys respond positively to it and like it, and we want to just thank you again for your time, and I'll open it up to questions or if Lynn wants to put in with the staff report.
Don't go anywhere.
Oh, okay.
Any Commissioners have questions of the applicant at this point, at this moment?
Not yet.
None at this point? Okay.
Not yet, okay.
So there are two entitlement applications before you tonight. One is for a use permit for the apartments that would be located in the community commercial portion of the site which fronts on Lincoln Avenue. It's not required for the multifamily zoning, the R3 zoning at the rear of the property, but it's a conditionally permitted use in the commercial district. And then also, obviously, a design review application for the entire project. And as part of this package, as Vanessa mentioned, they are proposing to offer 15% of the units, and I wanted to clarify, there's a couple errors in the staff report, it would be at 80% of area meeting income, which qualify as low income. They wouldn't be as deep as the 60% that's mentioned in the staff report, that was an error. So they, that means under state law, that they are entitled to a density bonus, which they're requesting, and up to two concessions. So as I mentioned, on the back of the site, in the darker green is the R3, and then the front of the property in the purple is community commercial. The project is also located in the resort character area overlay of the general plan, and as detailed in the written staff report, staff believes that is consistent with the land use and design considerations of this overlay. It does cluster apartments along Lincoln Avenue, which is called for. It features simple design with high-quality materials and visually suitable for this entry corridor. It would provide a landscape, landscape streetscape on Lincoln Avenue, a whole row of London plane trees, which will really leaf out and be nice, large trees. Also, the parking areas are screened from public view, and a pathway for pedestrian cyclists, interconnectivity with downtown, would be provided, and those are all called for in this overlay area. Just briefly, on the density bonus request, they are, the base zoning allows 57 units, as well as the general plan allows 57 units for the site. They're providing 12 affordable units, so they qualify for 35% density bonus, which is for a total of 78 units. They are entitled by state law to reduced parking standards, so under that requirement, they would have to provide 118 parking spaces, but they are providing 134, which exceeds the minimum by 16. And the two density bonus concessions that they are asking in order to construct the project and provide the affordable units is a height increase from 25 feet to 40 feet to accommodate the three-story buildings, and also a reduction in the side yard setback from 12 feet to 10 feet just next to the community building, otherwise it meets all setbacks. And this is also in your staff report, so they are consistent with all development standards in both of the zoning districts, with the exception of the interior side yard, and with the maximum building height. Otherwise, they're consistent with the, all the other yards and the minimum usable open space, which, as was noted, will be provided, there will be private space for each unit as well as large communal open space area. Other offsite improvements and some conditions of approval that are recommended in your resolutions are requiring the project to construct the vine trail not only along its frontage but southerly to connect to the sidewalk at Stevenson Manor, so that residents can easily move back and forth with the downtown, both walking and bicycling. This is a Class 1 path along Lincoln Avenue as well as part of the vine trail. They are also required to make significant water and sewer improvements. Some of them are replacing the Lincoln Avenue sewer between Wapo and Fairway, and also constructing a new sewer main in the Fairway extension from Lincoln Avenue to Anna Street. And these are community-wide benefits as well as needed to serve the project. And they'll also be incorporating grease reduction measures, and no geothermal use is proposed or would be allowed as part of the project. There was a traffic impact analysis prepared for the project. The project would generate approximately 400 daily trips. However, all the affected intersections would continue to operate acceptably under existing conditions. The project's short and long-term effect on traffic would be less insignificant. Specific analysis was done to see if a left turn lane on Lincoln was warranted, and it was not needed for this project, according to the traffic consultant. And they are also fulfilling the recommended pedestrian connections, which were included in the traffic study. This project qualifies for a California Environmental Quality Act infill exemption. It's consistent with the general plan designations and policies. It occurs within the city limits, and it's on less than five acres, substantially surrounded by developed parcels. It has no value as habitat for endangered rare threat species. It has no significant impacts related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and it can be adequately served by utilities and services. So we are recommending that this infill exemption be used, and similar to the one used for the Calistoga Vista project, as well as the, no, we did it next decade. So I also just would like to advise you that the project is consistent with the general plan's housing element by developing an identified housing opportunity site that is within walking distance of downtown and is in close proximity to a bus stop. It also makes the best use of the site by reserving units for low-income households and constructing at a density that exceeds the top of the residential density range. It would also fulfill policies and actions of the circulation element by constructing a segment of the Napa Valley Vine Trail. And so, oh, also, as detailed in your written staff report, the project is consistent with the city's multifamily residential design guidelines, and we are therefore recommending approval of the use permit and design review application subject to the conditions contained in the resolution, as well as the requested density bonus and affordable housing concessions. Just back to the affordability of the units, so it would be 12 units affordable at a maximum of 80% of area meeting income, and that would be equivalent to rent for a one-bedroom, including utilities, not Netflix and phone and all that, but the basic utilities, of $1,490 per month. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
I have one.
I have one that's not directly related, that you may or may not know the answer to off the top of your head, but here's a pop quiz for you. The other two three-story projects at either end of Washington, do you remember the height of those projects?
I want to say very close to 40. Yeah, and then Calistoga Vista, I think, is also just shy of 40.
That was the other one I was going to ask about.
Yeah.
Actually, I thought the Vista was actually a little over 40, wasn't it, in a couple of locations?
Possibly on the community building at the back.
I'm thinking it may, that one portion was.
And possibly the Livework. No, those were two-story.
There was a tall one, right.
Yeah, one portion of it, yeah.
Okay. I'd be happy to research that for you, though.
Lynn, could you walk through the approvals that, specifically with the vine trail, that will be required and to get from Caltrans? What will be the process there?
Derek Rayner with the Public Works Department is with us tonight. He's making a guest appearance, so I would like to pass that question to him, if you don't mind.
Yeah, to kind of touch on the vine trail, the pathway is currently being planned along the frontage of the Motor Lodge project. It's already been built along the Indian Springs frontage, and basically this connection for this project would tie both those together, so it basically get the trail all the way up, you know, once Motor Lodge is built, up to the intersection of the five-way intersection up there at Silverado Trail and Lincoln.
Is the, is the trail within the, within the right-of-way or outside the right-of-way?
It's within the right-of-way. It's within Caltrans right-of-way.
Is that true all the way down?
Yes.
For the constructed portions?
That's initially, that's what we've, it's initially laying out that it's all within the right-of-way. That's correct.
Okay. So Caltrans has previously given all the permits for, for the springs and the areas where it's been built?
Yeah, I believe on Indian Springs, it was actually on their own property. It wasn't in Caltrans right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
But, but we, we've had a meeting with Caltrans, the city staff has, and basically detailed a lot of things for Motor Lodge, and specifically where that trail goes is actually all within the Caltrans right-of-way, so we've had a lot of coordination meetings with them, and it's, it's similar all the way down, basically, to Brandon.
Okay. So, so Caltrans will need to review and approve that system before really anything can happen with it? And do you, do you know what sorts of timelines Caltrans works on?
Well, we've had some success on, on similar projects where we've kind of phased the plans so that they run kind of in parallel of each other, and they're not held up by, you know, maybe a slower process. So typically, yes, Caltrans generally takes a little bit longer to get through their process, but I think with, since we've had a lot of meetings and we've already worked out a lot of the issues with Motor Lodge, I think it's, it's probably going to be a little, little easier to get this one through.
Okay.
Just a guess, though. Thanks.
Thank you there. Any other questions of staff? If not, this is a public hearing. I will open it up to anyone who would like to speak. Please feel free to come forward.
I'm Karen Chang. Do you want to address all the questions?
Just your first name, I mean, it's fine.
Okay. I'm Karen Chang, and I have two comments to make. As you know, we just came out of, partially out of a drought, and can I recommend that native plants be used in the landscaping wherever possible? Because those, once they're established, won't need water at all. Lavender, even though it's a goat-resistant and Mediterranean-type plant, that still needs water. And I think if we have plants that don't require additional water, that draws on our water system, that I think is a good thing to have. The second thing is that just last year, we were threatened with fire. Do we have any requirements for, within our building code now, that makes the buildings more fire resistant? I know that you can't make anything that will not burn, because even in Ventura County, they had buildings that were, that just were wiped out, even though they were concrete and with concrete roofs. So that is, those are my two questions.
Thank you very much.
I just have one page, it's double-spaced. So I don't in general have a problem with the project when it stays. So I don't in general have a problem with the project when it stays within the guidelines of the general plan, but I do have a problem with the variances and concessions and exceptions. 78 units instead of 57. Six months ago here, I raised the issue of carrying capacity and limits representing only myself then and still now. But something's changed in the last six months. First, there was a local election with two out of three voters endorsing smaller rather than larger. And second, after the Tubbs Fire and the Redding Fire came the destruction of Paradise. And one or two fires might be a fluke, but three in a year make a pattern that can't be ignored, meaning we can't continue with business as usual. After this election, we must respond to the people. After the fires, we must acknowledge the dangers of density. The concession of 21 more units because 12 are going to be a little cheaper is exactly the kind of incremental excess I talked about six months ago. A few more here, a few more there, it all adds up. And finally, the voters see the cumulative effect and they said, "It's time for a change." These variances and exceptions are what the election was about. And approving this proposal would again confirm the disconnect between the community and City Hall. And the climate also says change. With the reality of firestorms and doubtful evacuation protocols, we can't increase, keep increasing density like we might have before. The old guidelines that fire departments and planners used in the past aren't sufficient. Those extra 21 units might seem so reasonable, and they are the kind of excess that after disaster we say, "How did we let those go in?" It's like speeding down the highway. Exceed the limit and sooner or later, we've got a problem. Stay within the limit, you still get where you want to go. Notice I'm not talking no growth. Allow the 57 units. I'm talking respect for the community's established plan and the new reality of climate change problems. The project is professionally packaged and endorsed by the planning department. It looks so okay on paper. There's a CEQA saying, "As usual, no significant impact." I don't blame you if you're disposed towards the project, but it represents business as usual. And after this election, after these fires, it can't be business as usual here. We can't just keep approving these projects in the same old way. We have to think different. So many people expressed hope to me for a change. I'd be remiss not to speak up. And now we're aware of the dangers of overdevelopment in disaster zones. It's common sense for the planning commission representing our community to inform the applicant that Calistoga will welcome their 57-unit project. And finally, I suggest again that we consider carrying capacity, limits, and saturation points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Jerry Turgeon. I want to also bring up two concerns. And I also want to say that I, this is the type of, of project that I generally would be, you know, quite in favor of. I do share many of the same concerns that Donald just brought up in his discussion, primarily the increase in density. And I also wanted to refer back to the staff report. On page two of eight, lines 68, excuse me, 65 through 68, there's a sentence that says, "The very modest size of most of the project's units, as little as 500 square feet for studios and up to 1,200 square feet for three-bedroom units." And the fact that many of them are likely to be occupied primarily by one person mitigates the actual density of the project. And I was just curious what facts or what information was presented to make a statement like that in the staff report. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Yant, and I don't know where I live.
Yes, you do.
I am currently staying in town.
There you go.
With that being said, having evacuated about three times in, or four, you know, three times in four days, excuse me, is there two exits to this or two entrance and two exits to this? Because evacuating out of Chateau Calistoga was very orderly and nice, but it also brought about the awareness that there's only one real good exit that could be easily blocked by La Perdida having something happen there. Is there another exit out of this to get people from here out to the trail so it wouldn't be so congested coming out on Lincoln? You're going to need more than one way to get these people, that many people, out of a complex. And I think it needs to be addressed. Firestorms are coming to be normal.
Thank you, Cindy.
I may be naive in my understanding of the process, but I'm concerned by the fact, Gwen Becker, 1715 Michaelway. I'm concerned by the fact that you as commissioners are presented with only one option tonight. It's the option of highest density and includes a height variance of 40 feet that could set a very unacceptable precedent for our small town. I feel staff should give you three options to look at. You would have more information and not be swayed by the staff's single recommendation. They could give you 55, 57 units with no variance, 45 regular units and 12 affordable units with no variance, and they could give you their recommendation. We have no proof that the project with 57 units is not financially feasible. That should not be our problem. They need to make it financially feasible, not us. If it is against protocol to present three options at the time of voting for approval, perhaps the previous meeting could be more like a study session where commissioners can ask staff or developers questions about three options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Steve Patel, 1201 Willa Street, also have a business at 1830 Lincoln Avenue. I just wanted to let the commission know we, you know, we fully support this project. I certainly have a number of employees as well as another number of people that are just Calistogans that, that want to live here and, and need another option. And, you know, speaking from a lot of my employees, especially those that have been here for 10, 15, 20 years, they need options. And, and quite frankly, so do the rest of us. The housing market is, is not there. So we fully support this project. We need housing. Our employees do. Our residents do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
I, you're sort of a prototypical business owner here in town, so I'll just ask you, in your experience, of the number of people you employ, could you give a guess as to what percentage of them live in Calistoga or, or how many of them have to commute from outside?
I would say, and, and of course, we do have some of the smaller properties here in town. I would say we have a total of probably about 70 employees. I would say about 50% are commuting in from either Lake County or Santa Rosa. And I know that that number didn't used to be 50%. It used to be closer to 25, 20. And certainly with, I've lost a couple of employees because they have either lost their housing and could not find new housing anywhere in the area. So my fear is that that number greatly goes up to 75 or 80%. And, you know, we have a huge commuting problem at that point.
Okay.
Which we already did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Charlotte Williams, 59th U Road. So some of these issues have been brought up, but I feel like they are quite important, so I'm going to bring them up again. My greatest concerns about this project are the lack of escape routes, probable number of occupants, water and wastewater processing and storage capacity for the town. As we've seen repeatedly, our very brave and hard-working fire personnel are not able to stop all fires, nor are they able to save all lives. We should not be endangering any lives by approving and building what are becoming fire traps, that is developments with one way in and one way out. In Calistoga right now, we have six large to medium-sized neighborhoods in Calistoga terms with very limited egress. That's River Lee Centennial Circle, Rancho de Calistoga, Chateau Calistoga, Calistoga Springs, and East Washington Street. In case of wind-driven building-fueled fires, as we've seen in Santa Rosa, Redding, and now Paradise, what is likely to happen to residents of similar Calistoga neighborhoods? What are truly, what are their truly accessible escape routes? Their proposed apartment project on Lincoln Avenue looks very much like a trap for those residents living in the area enclosed by Calistoga Motor Lodge, Lava Vine Winery, and the Nestle Water Plant. What evacuation routes are planned for how many people? How many vehicles? My experience living in apartments in Calistoga tells me that one-bedroom apartments do hold four adult-sized people, that two-bedroom apartments do hold four adults and four children. When you allow high-density housing without sufficient evacuation routes, how many lives are you putting at risk? We currently have water that is unreliable in regards to health. Approving more housing at a time when the projects currently under construction are very large and most likely consumers of a great deal of water doesn't make sense. Also, I'm concerned about that bike path, too. And right now, what I've seen using the Brannan Street-Lincoln intersection, either as a bicyclist myself, pedestrian, and driving, is very unsafe and it's extremely unsafe at night. So unless this project or Caltrans is planning on putting lights there, stoplight, or lighted crosswalks both across Brannan Street and across Lincoln Avenue, I think you're putting a bunch of teenagers at risk, too. So I'd like you to consider those things. And please do not approve this project until the applicants can provide guaranteed safe and sufficient escape routes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and it's, and we'll have the applicant see if they can answer a few questions from commissioners in a moment. But staff, would you like to address any of the concerns that have been brought up tonight?
In terms of Karen Chang's comment about will buildings be more fire resistant than they were before the wildfires, I believe they're working on updating the codes at the state level, but no changes have been made to our codes other than the special conditions that we have here for very high fire hazard areas. And this is not located in one of those, so they, but they would be subject to the normal typical building code and fire code design requirements. I would like, maybe the applicant can address whether there will be limits on the number of tenants that can occupy each unit. And I believe a lighted crosswalk is being planned for the Brannan and Lincoln Avenue intersection that is going to be user-activated. And we're moving along with that design and the funding for that right now. So we recognize that that is a dangerous situation right now about projects. So there's a need to slow down cars and make them aware that people are crossing at that location.
The, so they brought, talked about the density bonus and, but some of these things are state mandates, I believe, and are allowable by the law. So could you go through that a little bit?
Yeah, they're, they're not considered variances. They're considered a concession or incentive in order to provide the affordable units. And you can deny a requested incentive or concession only if you make one of the following findings. One is that the concession or incentive is not required in order to provide for affordable rents for the targeted units. And the applicant has stated in their project supplemental that this, these number of units are what is necessary to make the, the project pencil out in, in order to be able to provide these 12 low-income units. Perhaps Mr. Matea can speak to that a little more. Or the concession or incentive would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety or the physical environment or on any real property that's listed in the California Register of Historical Resources. And we don't believe any of those conditions are in effect. And the last finding that you would have to make, well, one of these findings, the concession or incentive would be contrary to state or federal law. And we do not believe that any of the deviations from the development standards would be contrary to state or federal law.
Okay, very good.
Just to note that one of the deviations is a minor reduction, a two-foot side yard setback adjacent to the community building, which is not adjacent to any sensitive uses. So we're basically talking about the height increase as the primary concession.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come back up and maybe address some of the issues brought up tonight? And then after the person can stay, whoever wants to take the, the questions from the commissioners as well, possibly? Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I want to address a couple of comments that came up, just starting from the beginning. So Karen Chang, you mentioned the concept of using native plants to this area that don't require any water. So absolutely, that's something that is a great idea, and we'll look into that and see what we can do there. In terms of, I want to just touch on the density as well, since this is a big concern for a lot of the community. So as Lynn said, this is within the state density bonus law. So this is allowable under that law, and I'll speak a little bit to the feasibility. So if we were only allowed to build a 57-unit community, which is the base zoning, it would not be financially feasible, and we definitely would not be here tonight. So this state density bonus law is basically what allows us to proceed with this project. And then in terms of Cindy had, Cindy as well as a couple of others had comments regarding ingress and egress. And we, I, I don't know if it was clear on our plans, but we do have two points of egress and ingress into the property, and I'm not sure if that addresses the concerns, but I wanted to point that out. And then there was a comment in terms of just density, in terms of number of people living within these units. And so there are state laws that have maximums in terms of the number of tenants that can reside in certain-sized units. And so we would just follow those. And I think what was mentioned earlier wouldn't, isn't within those laws. So I think that is what, how I would address the comments that were made. Okay. So I'll remain here for any other questions that you guys have.
Okay, very good. Commissioners? Yes, Mr. Wilks?
As you've gone through the design process, the, where, the comments that we've heard about this, the, another means of egress, obviously everyone is concerned about being able to exit to the north up to Silverado Trail. And the northern end of the property is bounded by three separate pieces of property, three separate ownerships. Have you engaged any of those other property owners to see what possibilities there would be to have an emergency Knox Box-type exit out of the property?
We have been in contact with some of our neighbors or our future neighbors there. We haven't specifically talked about a sort of emergency evacuation plan, but that's a great idea, and we are in contact with them, so we can definitely have those conversations to come up with an emergency-type plan.
Have you talked with, at the old water company property? Have you spoken with them at all?
The, the old bottling plant? We, we haven't. They were one that we were not yet able to get in touch with, but we're still working on that and expect to be in touch with them soon, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like a, a real opportunity there. There's, it would make no, zero difference in your There's, it would make no, zero difference in your site plan because you've got a drive that goes virtually up to the property line. Their drive is almost on the property line, and I know that the fire chief would be thrilled if, if, and it, and it could be something that would be gated in with Knox Box, so that there would be an opportunity for another egress.
Yeah, that's a great point. So we're planning to have some discussions with the owner there, particularly, or specifically about the vine trail that, as it was mentioned earlier by Derek, the vine trail's within the right-of-way, but because there may be some grading impacts where we may need to go onto the property on the Lincoln Avenue side, we wanted to have discussions with them, and so we're working on getting in touch with them, and would definitely bring this up as an emergency evacuation plan and discuss it with them. Does that address your question?
Yeah, I'm, is, Lynn, is there any leverage that the, that the city can employ to encourage one of those owners to sort of get on board with an idea like this?
Nestle has not come to us with any proposal lately. We met with them a few weeks ago, but they were just kind of doing a tour of their properties and weren't talking about any specific development of that property. That's typically when we have some leverage, when they're seeking some kind of entitlement from us. So Calistoga Motor Lodge is, their entitlements are done, and Belkor Ag is to the south, they may redevelop at some point, but I think you're basically talking about getting out to Silverado, so.
Yeah.
That would be the optimal solution, is to go in the back way from, from the Nestle property.
Yeah, to the south or, you know, west, there's already two exits.
Right, yeah.
And, and so the bottleneck, or the, the trap point would be at the north, and, and the, the old bottling plant is, from, from a logistical standpoint, a natural.
Right. Well, you also have to look at the site plan and see how it would connect to the end of the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
The, the fire department did review the plans, and they did meet their standards for two points of access, as well as the turnaround at the end of that parking lot. But we can definitely keep that in mind if we have further discussions with Nestle.
That's my question, sure.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
Okay, well, I'll bring up one, this is an disassociated issue, it has to do with your landscape. I only have one real, little bit of heartburn on your landscape plan, and that is, is that, of course, you'll be removing some existing and not terribly healthy sycamores on, on, on Lincoln Avenue, London plane trees, and you're proposing to put in eight new ones, 15 gallons, which probably come up to my shoulder when they're, once they're in the ground. You know, it seems like a project that's going to be as large as this, you could do better. So, you know, I mean, I would love to see eight 36-inch boxes, at least, or something, something that would get, at least be identifiable as a tree and not just sort of a thin shrub. So that is just, again, an aside.
Sure, yeah, and we, that's something we can definitely look at.
Okay.
And my question is also not related to the other things that have been brought up yet, but in looking at this packet, it appears that only one of the buildings is going to reach the 40-foot mark?
That's correct.
And that's the one that's in the far back?
That's correct.
So the front buildings, I believe, top out at?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-six and change, okay, yeah, 37. Okay. So I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly, that the tallest building is to the back and that the lowest development has been put up to Lincoln Avenue.
That is correct, yes.
I just had a question of Lynn. You mentioned in your PowerPoint, I believe, that there were certain conditions. Have they been incorporated in the project?
They have been either incorporated into the project, or they are included in your resolution 2018-23.
It will be.
And they have been accepted by the applicant. We've been working, working these conditions to get to this point, so there's been a lot of ping-ponging.
Okay.
So I think everybody's satisfied at this point.
Do you know, dollar-wise, the off-site improvement cost to this project?
I'm not sure that I have that off the top of my head for you.
Because it's got to be substantial, you're going down a state highway, it's not easy.
It is substantial.
And you know that our infrastructure is literally disintegrating on Lincoln Avenue, so I was just curious, because it's a condition of approval, and it, and I know that it is substantial. And the people in this community need to understand that it's not being voiced properly here sometimes, that water and sewer is important, their water and sewer rates were a huge driving force in the elections, but the millions upon millions upon millions of dollars that are being poured into this community to fix the infrastructure at a developer's cost does not get put on the ratepayers' back, and the people in this community may not understand, they should, that the user pays in the state of California, so if you use the water and sewer, you pay for the maintenance of that and the delivery of that. And so this is a way of taking some of that cost and that burden off the tax, the ratepayers, so. People need to pay attention to some of the things that are going on that have not been talked about tonight, these, these improvements, so, excuse me, I got a frog in my throat. It's very important to you, I know, as a cost, but to the community as a whole. Can we talk a little bit about the materials being used? The, the issue we brought about, fire resistance materials, I know Stucco's there. I'm in construction, and you may or may not know that.
I've heard.
And sadly, for some people, I've built more homes in this community than anyone, but, and, and it is a concern, fire, it is. There are things can be incorporated into your construction that are minimal, obviously, venting, that the new fire, you know, we call them wooly venting, but there's a variety of names for them. Those are inexpensive things that, that help protect your investment. But what is the siding? Is it, are you using a wood siding, or are you thinking of using a hardy style? Is it hardy? I didn't get.
It's hardy, yes.
So, so are you really starting to build into very fire-resistant structure, just like most of the wildland interface that's going on right now with homes? So I think that needed to be answered, because that was a question that was brought up, and, of course, you have to fire sprinkler, that's state code and all those things, so.
Yes.
People need to be aware of that, okay?
Thank you for bringing that up.
Really don't, oh, I do have something that's, it's in my heart, and most people know me, that, because I've been here over 40 years, is that you noted, I did note you have one parking space that's ADA-compliant that's covered? Is that correct? Did I, I saw that?
That's correct, yeah, one of the garages.
I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, units that are ADA-compliant, I mean, can you tell me just a little bit, because we do have a lot of folk that, in this community that are older, that may want it, that may be a, be a very valuable thing to them.
Yeah, exactly. The whole property is ADA-compliant.
No, no, I don't mean, I mean, I mean the apartments themselves, I mean, are you zero, you have, you know, no curbs type installation for showers, are they tubs? Because tubs don't do anything for a lot of folk that are disabled. Do you have some units that way? I know I'm getting a little technical, but.
Yes, let me see if I can answer, and then we have a technical expert. Oh, actually, I'm actually just going to bring up our technical expert on this one.
Because we can roll out, it's ADA-compliant, but trust me, my wife is 100% disabled, so I totally understand, and I would like to think that we're addressing a little bit of that need.
Okay, absolutely. So this is our architect, Chris Weimhold, and he can help.
Good evening, commissioners, thanks for having us. Yeah, as I said, my name is Chris Weimhold, I'm with Architectural Design Collaborative, and every apartment community today, the ground floor of those apartments at the very minimum are on accessible route, and then themselves are also accessible, as in, you can get everywhere in your unit within a wheelchair. The, they're not fully accessible, as in, they don't have grab bars installed, ready to go, but they do have blocking in the walls in case someone moves in that needs grab bars, they could usually be installed by the ownership. The, all the units on the ground floor are considered adaptable, meaning that if someone within, has a wheelchair and they need to access their bathroom sink, the, the toe-kick of that vanity can actually be pulled out and they could wheel underneath the countertop and actually use the sink properly, they have the knee clearance that they need, and they can also back out. So the CBC has, you know, a lot of improvements and adaptions that we've been meeting, and every code cycle that comes out, there's new ones that we have to comply with. And so every ground floor unit of this apartment building and the community building would be 100% fully ADA, but the apartments are all adaptable and on accessible route.
Okay, and then, I guess one last question seems kind of maybe benign to most folks, I didn't hear anything about like roll-in showers, things like that?
Well, if we had a shower, it would have to be accessible. So what we do have in the units, and if you wanted to flip over to your packet where it has the unit plans, we actually don't have any just standalone showers in the, in the units, we have shower-tub combos, and what is done for those is, basically, you have a, a seat that you could put into the tub, and if you need the grab bars, the blocking is already in the walls, so the grab bars can be installed, and it becomes accessible.
Great, I understand all that, so, so do you have nothing that's rolled in if you're wheelchair-bound, if you have no ability to be in a shower chair and roll into it, you would have to have, you would have to have additional assistance to, to function in this, in any one of these units, at this point?
You would have better knowledge on how that works than I do.
I do, I mean, it's just a question, I, I take it from a personal thing.
You're supposed to be able to do it on your own with the adaptability of the unit, you're supposed to be able to pull yourself out of the wheelchair with the grab bars and be able to.
So you would have to have some mobility?
Yes.
Okay. Clarification, I know quite a few folks in the community that, that are wheelchair-bound and use different things, that cannot do that, and they, they would like to not have assistance, but it's, it's just, it's probably, it's not a venting, but it's just a question, so.
That brings up a big question, anybody with, with that type of disability would probably need a lot of help.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question in my brain here. Color. We have, I have had so many people contact me and ask me about a resort that's going up in, in this community and the homes, which I was not a supporter, supporting that portion of the development when it came through. But they're like little white, white elephants on a hillside, and to me, it, I, I almost have to close my eyes coming into town. And, and with all due respect, maybe that's, I like the architecture, I like everything about it. Color-wise, can we mute it down just a little bit from white to black? And that's, that's something, I know Sam's Club is, is a kind of a white or cream, and it's, I've got nothing but, people in the community love that building, something more that direction, is that something that you'd be, would consider?
Yeah, I think that we would be happy to look at a modified color scheme and work with you guys or the city in modifying that as we get into our construction drawings and look at more specifics on color.
Curb appeal is important.
We agree.
Commissioner Wilks?
Yeah, I just, one other question. The, the dog run, the dog park, which is terrific, is your neighbor to the north aware that you're proposing that?
We have gone over our plans with them. You're talking about the lava vine property, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we have reviewed our plans with them. I don't recall if we specifically talked about the dog park. It may have gone unnoticed, I don't remember, but what we plan to do there is, we want to make it a nice area, obviously, we don't want to have a negative impact on our neighbor. So a couple of things that we looked at, one is, that's actually going to be right next to the back of one of their buildings, so they have like a nice seating area, and this won't be next to that. If we brought up our site plan, I could show you, I think our parking area will be closer to that seating area, and then the dog run will actually be like kind of right behind their building. I could take a closer look at it. So we don't see it being a negative impact, but then in addition, just to provide a little bit more privacy to them, we wanted to use a flowering vine to grow on our fence there, just to provide some privacy to them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? I would encourage you, if this project were to be approved, to, and work with staff to try to, to find an additional EVA, emergency vehicle accidents, and I know it's with Calman or Nestle's, it just seems like a natural, it would never get used unless it was an emergency. I think that's very important, and I agree with Cindy Yant, if she's still here, she did lose her home, and I think that's something that's very important to the people that would live in this establishment, so.
Okay, we will look at that.
Okay. If there's no other questions of the applicant, we can entertain a motion?
Well, is the public hearing closed?
It is closed, has been closed.
Well, yeah, there's, I, I think there's a few observations I would like to make. There's, specifically, first of all, we've heard Don talk about smaller, larger, I don't remember that specifically being on the ballot. So there, in, and in context to that, I, I hear daily about the need for housing, and this is not, in my view, a need for housing for, for the more people to move here and, and have expanding businesses or services or anything else. This is a need for housing for people who are already here, who are already working here in town. I think that, that the reason I asked Mr. Patel that question is that I think that that's demonstrable of what I hear from people everywhere. And, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've had literally people come up onto my porch and say, "I see you've got a building in the back, and is it for rent?" And it's, you know, "It's my studio." So, no, but, but I, I recognize that need, and, and within that context, I think that if we are making an attempt to provide more specifically high-density, meaning more affordable type of housing, if, if the argument is to make, gee, just make it smaller, if, if you're to provide more housing, there's two ways to do it, you make it denser, or you make the city bigger. Or you say, "Well, let's close up a few businesses and make the town smaller." And so those are really the alternatives, and that's how I put it in, in the context. And I, and let me also disclose, I have, I did speak to the applicant before they submitted their project, and actually before their design was even done, and, and I made a number of suggestions as to what my views were relative to the development of that, and I was very pleased to see that virtually all of my suggestions were incorporated in, in the design. So I, that, I took that as, as a good-faith gesture that, that there was some listening going on. I support the project. I think that, that it has spoken to a number of the needs that we have here. I think that the location is ideal for this kind of facility. I would really like to find a mechanism that we could forcibly encourage the, the proponents to have a, have a serious conversation with, with neighbors on the north side about an emergency access. And, because I, I think that that is a, a real and present issue, and so I, I think that somehow that's got to be addressed, and I'm not quite sure how we would incorporate that. But that's, that's generally my view of it.
Okay, thank you.
I just might like to say again that I think it obviously serves a badly-needed purpose that we've all recognized. The density is critical to it, it won't go forward without that density, which is permitted and encouraged by state law, and I really like the look of the project, and I like the location of the project.
Okay, thank you.
I echo those same sentiments. We've been told multiple times by multiple different developers or people bringing projects to us that a smaller project isn't feasible, and we are starting to understand that if we, if we want affordable housing in town, this is what it's going to need to look like in order for it to come, otherwise the projects won't keep coming to us if we mandate that they be smaller than this. The location seems really ideal for projects of this height and density, just because the neighbors are all very willing to, to welcome it, and I think it's been very well done. I like the light cream tones and the white, but that's, to each their own.
Of course, it's, it's a creamy white, so I think that we're just talking about shades of cream.
I think we are.
I like your shirt, Paul.
Oh, no, thank you very much. I want to be, I want to be very fair to the, to the, to the folks that came tonight, so I'm going to, I am going to open up the public hearing one more time, if they would like to make a, a final comment, I, I welcome that. I've always been very transparent in this community, I've been here quite some time, so the public. So the public hearing is open again. If you want to make a really quick brief statement, and if not, I will close it. Yes, Cindy, if you'd like to, come on up. Come up, please. Thank you.
Buildings could block an exit. You have to think of getting not, not just going to the north. I haven't looked at the plan 100%, but you have to think of getting them out all four directions because you don't know what can impact a building or an exit, if that makes any sense?
It does. One of the things I think was critical, and I asked the question because I am sensitive to the, to your loss, as you know, we've known each other forever, that, you know, what are these structures made of? What, what, what has gone into place since 20, 30 years ago? And, and I agree with the, the exits. I agree with a lot of things you're saying. But to make this work, and it sounds like they've listened, it sounds to me like they've tried to make them as, you know, fireproof as we can. And I know exiting is a big issue. I'm going to have to think about the response from the fire department when they looked at the project and everything. And you're involved with fire departments, so you would understand that. So, but they're valid concerns. Nothing's perfect. I, I understand that.
Another comment, because I'm facing this in rebuilding, is they say, they say I have to have sprinklers. And I'm sure they're in this project too. And somebody brought up, well, what are sprinklers on the inside going to help you when your wildfire is coming from the outside? And I went, yeah, you're right. What about outside sprinklers? Because that was a part that burned in the 64 fire.
So a lot of that to be addressed is through the, the materials being used. They're not combustible. And venting was critical. Most of the houses that were lost, there were just screen vents. And with the wind and the heat, they just went running into the, right under houses, right up in the attics immediately. And there was, there's just no control. With the new designs, that's, that's not going to happen. And in your house, I'm, I'm sure it'll be the same way.
The one we had?
The one you're going to have.
No, but outside watering is something to think about. I think everybody's right.
And I don't know the practicality of that. I honestly, in a cost analysis, I don't know.
Like a fire sprinkler.
So, no, I understand what it is, but the cost to, to plum and put in and be effective on a structure that large, I'm not so sure. I think a lot of, it's very important would be landscaping. A lot of this stuff, there's a lot of good landscaping. It's not that combustible too, I think, that needs to be considered and management.
The outside sprinkler is something to think about because it would help, would help have slowed something down. That fire was still hot.
Those are suggestions that they can look into. Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else? See, now I will close the, the public hearing again. Yes, Commissioner Wilks?
Yeah, I, just an observation. I, I've had experience with, with the process because we've gone through fire storms. And a fire storm by definition is really different than a, than a fire in a, in a community. Because a fire storm comes through, it's coming through at something around 2,000 degrees. And you could have a completely fireproof exterior to any building. And what happens is the building will spontaneously combust from inside because the entire interior is brought to kindling temperature. So there's really nothing that can be done in a fire storm kind of condition. And a fire storm requires, it's always driven by high winds, but it takes two components. It's the high winds, the oxygen, and a very substantial fuel base that is coming through. That's why that's usually in a wildland condition. And, and here, we're in the flat part of town and not really the kind of environment that would support a fire storm like that. The major risk here in a, where there is a fire storm in the surrounding, is all of the embers and things that are coming from the fire and landing on everyone's roofs and landing in, everywhere around. And I think it's, it's good that this project and pretty much any project that we're building now is a Class A fire, fire resistant, fireproof roof. The exterior materials on this building being, it looks like wood, but is in fact what is made out of cement that looks like wood and stucco. These are completely fireproof kinds of things. So I think that the susceptibility to some of the things that we witnessed in the fires that we had last year are, are, are different in that respect. The, as the fire went through Santa Rosa and went across the freeway and through attractive homes, those, those were homes that were 50 some odd years old and probably highly combustible. So I think that, I think that our charge is to say, let's, let's get access, egress, well, both access for fire equipment, but also egress to get people out. And I think that there's a real opportunity there. And, and that's will be something I'd like to incorporate in terms of a condition.
Are we allowed to do that?
Of course we are.
Sure you are.
Well, it's, it's, it's how I voice the condition.
Yes, indeed it is.
If we, if we, if we move forward with, with a, a proposal to move, to approve the project, I would look for two conditions. One is, I would like to see the eight plane trees along, along Lincoln Avenue be, be a minimum of 36-inch boxes. And then secondly, I would like to, a condition that the proponents have documented proposals to address and work with the neighboring properties, whether it's the winery, whether it's the old bottling plant, those are the two likely ones, to see what they could do that would probably be at their expense to be able to provide an emergency exit egress and, and have the city staff in the loop on all of that process.
Are you, are you saying they have to achieve that or they have to work with that?
They have to work with it to the best they can. If, if an owner says, you're not coming through my property, come hell or high water, then, then, then it's, that's unachievable. And, and the fire chief has said that, that he can work with this as it is. I'm proposing that it, that we try to make it better. And I don't think Steve will be unhappy.
So you would, let's clean it all up a little bit.
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilks, you'd like to, you'd like a, some, some kind of, of tracking device that the due diligence is being made with the adjacent property owners to achieve an EVA? That makes sense?
They can submit that prior to issuance of building permit.
Okay. Yeah. Good, good, good choice. I agree with that. Yes. Okay. That being said, I will entertain a motion. There are two motions here.
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving use permit application UP 2018-9 and design review application DR 2018-7.
Do we have a second?
Second.
As noted.
With added conditions as noted.
There you go.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilks, would you like to do number two?
Sure. I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving a density bonus and affordable housing concessions and incentives for the Lincoln Avenue Apartments project.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Just like to note to the public that this is subject to a 10-day appeal period.
Yes. Okay. Moving on to H, matters initiated by commissioners. I would like to say to everyone here to have a great holiday, a safe holiday, and, and enjoy your families and Merry Christmas.
Second.
Anyone else? Okay. Hearing nothing else from the commissioners, Director's report.
Just a reminder that we have canceled the second meal in December. So that's my holiday present to you. No meeting on the 26th. So the next meal will be January 9th. January 9th. So you should be all recovered by then.
The calendar you gave us in the packet is?
Yes. Thank you for, yes, I gave you a calendar for next year.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adjourn to January 9th?
So moved.
Okay, got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good evening.